Okay, good morning, everybody. At ten oh two, we're calling to order the Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, May twentieth. And we will begin by looking for any public comment for items that do not appear on today's agenda. Is there anybody here for public comment? And if there is, you can simply unmute yourself and we will give you five minutes to address the board on any items that are not appearing on our agendas. Okay, we are hearing and seeing none. We will take public comment as each item is under consideration. We will move into our meeting minutes and look for an approval of two sets of minutes. The minutes of the March, I'm sorry. The minutes of the May thirteenth Board of Commissioners meeting and the April twenty seventh work sessions. Is there a motion to approve?
There we go. Motion to approve the minutes from the Thursday, May thirteenth Board of Commissioners meeting and the April twenty seventh work sessions. I did ask for a one word change in the one thirty work session, changing the word Thursday to the word Tuesday.
And would it be a second to that? Natalie, it looks like Commissioner Dershowitz muted via the Zoom. Could you unmute him via the Zoom? Not sure what happened there. Sorry, Steve, it looks like for you might have been muted upon entry on the Zoom side of things. So we're just waiting for Natalie to unmute you here. Give us one second, sorry. Okay, it looks like you're off mute, Steve.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Sorry about that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on our minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor do so by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay. All right, we're going to head into our proclamations for today and we have two. We are going to be first recognizing and proclaiming this week, right, May sixteenth through the twenty second as Emergency Medical Services Week. And we have with us Scott Routh and with Scott, we may have some other guests with us, but we know you do great work through the Belfont EMS service here in town and we will turn it over to you for some comments. And again, if there are any other members from the EMS community, feel free to please introduce them and 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 we want to recognize them as well. So good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you this morning? Hopefully, things are going well. As Commissioner Pike mentioned, I'm Scott Routh, I'm the Executive Director and Chief of Belfont EMS. And I also serve as the President for the Center County Ambulance Association that represents all EMS agencies within the county. With us today, I see Brent Smith from Pleasant Gap Fire Department Ambulance on the Zoom list there. I've tried to scan through, I don't see any that other names that pop out at me. So if there are, we could, we could take a moment there. But I just have a brief, just a brief item to read for the Commissioners on behalf of Center County Ambulance and the agencies. We thank the Commissioners for recognizing EMS providers at all training levels and others behind the scenes, along with the EMS agencies in Center County with the two thousand twenty one EMS Week proclamation. EMS in your community stands ready to respond to emergencies all day, every day, regardless of the circumstances. The past year has proven that EMS providers and agencies care about their communities and will place themselves at risk to get the job done. Each year EMS agencies struggle to find sufficient staffing, attempt to improve wages for staff so that they don't need to work two and three jobs, and enough funds to keep medical equipment and vehicles reliable and up to date. The past fourteen months has placed a strain on your local EMS agency and their staff even greater than normal with reduced revenue due to a twenty-five and in some cases a forty percent drop in call volume, increased expenses due to unforeseen purchases of personal protective equipment at grossly inflated prices. In addition to staffing, cases of staffing shortages due to illness, quarantining, and fewer newly certified people applying for open positions due to training course delays. On behalf of the Center County Ambulance Association members representing every EMS agency in Center County, we appreciate and thank Commissioners Pike, Higgins, and Dershowitz for issuing this proclamation in recognition of the dedication and professional commitment that every person involved in making the EMS system function to assist our neighbors when they call nine one one with an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. And please, Brent from Pleasant Gap EMS, if there's anything you'd like to add or comment on, we would absolutely welcome you to do so if you'd like to.
We certainly like to echo Scott's comments, but we really appreciate the support and the proclamation certainly demonstrates that support. Thank you.
Certainly, thank you, Brent. And we typically have EMS on the Tuesday, this Tuesday for this week, but with the primary election, unfortunately, we did not meet. So thank you for accommodating us on Thursday. But from the lobbying that you're doing in Harrisburg and Washington to improve the rates reimbursement to serving the community at people's doorsteps in times of need, we thank you profusely for all that you do for our community to keep our residents healthy. Any other comments from fellow board members?
I just wanted to thank our emergency responders. I know it's been a very tough year and couple of months and everyone appreciates all of the assistance you've given, you know, with, you know, significant difficulties going on here in the community due to the pandemic. Would also like to thank Scott for his assistance on the Center County Public Safety Training Center Advisory Board that we both serve on. So thanks again for everything our emergency responders do in Center County. I noticed we have Norm Spackman on. Like to thank Norm and his crew for everything they do at Center County nine one one, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. No excuses kind of job. Really appreciate it, Norm.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, first of all, thank you for your service and thank you for all the folks that work with you. I think the the challenge that we live in in the in the twenty-first century is most people don't understand the system that you operate under and how you're funded and and really the the expense and the the amount of training that's required. And everybody just assumes that when they dial nine one one, there's going to be an ambulance or a you know, emergency crew on the other side. And in your case, in the EMS Corps, I think what we've got is an incredibly dedicated group of people who who are there in some of the toughest of circumstances. It doesn't matter what time of the day, what the weather is, what the circumstance is. And you work together as a network so well to cover each other when there are shortages with one with one group or another. And you know, you're traveling across mountains and you're racing to scenes that are well outside your general jurisdiction. So I hope that the folks in our community understand and particularly the community leaders understand that we need to continue to work to find solutions to make your jobs and your capability for you to do your jobs easier and more accessible to to more money. Because quite frankly, if the trajectory continues on the level that it is right now, this is going to be tough to have this conversation even five years from now. So whatever we can do to help you and work with you to to expand your your capabilities, let us know. You know, I think we've we've demonstrated in the past our willingness to work with you and I think that that will continue into the future. And thank you all for what you do and keeping us safe and being there when unfortunately, we need you. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so with those comments, we will look for a motion to adopt the eighteenth proclamation of two thousand twenty-one.
Motion to adopt proclamation number eighteen of two thousand twenty-one proclaiming May six, sorry, sixteenth through the twentieth as Emergency Medical Services Week in Center County.
I will proudly second that and gladly do it.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor do so by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, gentlemen, thank you again. We appreciate it. Thanks for being here.
My call, this is Norm from nine one one.
Oh, sure, please, Norm.
Center County nine one one would like to recognize EMS Week and thank all the EMS agencies in the county who kept EMS working for us every day over the past year during these extremely difficult times. So, thank you.
Thank you, Norm, absolutely. Okay, so we're going to move into proclamation nineteen. And we are really pleased to have participants from the Jared Box Project and also Leadership Center County with us in the Jared Box Project Day. We have Cindy Kalaric and Donna Smith. And we also are joined by members of the Leadership Center County class who made this their project. And so I know we have Zach Barton, Executive Director of Leadership Center County with us today. But I think we'll start with Cindy and Donna and then we'll have some of the Leadership Center County folks provide their perspective as well.
Great, good morning. My name is Cindy Kalaric and I'm honored to be here on behalf of the Jared Box Project to share this amazing, sweet story with you. So the Jared Box Project was started right here in State College by the children of Our Lady of Victory Catholic School. The project was started to honor their classmate and friend Jared McMullin, who was a little kindergartner. So Jared was a brave little boy who battled cancer with courage and positive attitude, faith and sense of humor that that just continues to inspire us all. So Jared was known for carrying a backpack filled with toys to his hospital visits and instead of being nervous and scared and and upset by that setting, it's our understanding that Jared was looking out and sharing his toys with other children that were in the hospital. So his sense of humor and joy of childhood is something that he he shared with other children in the hospital. So unfortunately, Jared did lose his battle to cancer. But shortly after he passed away, his family and friends got together and we we really wanted to do something to honor Jared and his his inspiration of helping other children in the hospital. So we quite quickly came on that idea of like, well, let's just pick up where Jared left off, left off. Let's share toys with children in the hospital. So we came up with this very simple idea. It's toys in a box. It's a plastic shoebox filled with games and toys and fun activities. And the mission is to lift their spirits, calm their nerves, give them something to do and just let them know that someone else cared. So with that, the first project was started Our Lady of Victory Catholic School. They made it as their Vacation Bible School project. And they made eighty-one Jared boxes and we delivered them to Janet Weiss Children's Hospital. That's where Jared has his treatments. To be honest, this was to be a one-time service project done by this, at the Vacation Bible School. But the overwhelming positive response from the hospital and they're asking us, could you make more of these boxes in the future? Kind of got us, got us started in thinking of how we could continue this. And and with that, the Jared Box Project was started. There was a little article in the paper, other groups started making boxes, and this wave of kindness just absolutely took off. And I am just, I'll say flabbergasted to say that we are in all fifty states, over nine hundred thousand boxes have been made. And we literally at hospitals every day. I just this morning was on a call with another hospital. So we're quickly approaching four hundred, four hundred hospitals. So it's just so incredible to see how this project is powered by the kindness of others. And in State State College and Center County, the outpouring of support is just incredible. For example, thanks to the kindness of this community, we are able to provide over two hundred boxes a month to Mount Nittany Medical Center. They're giving, the boxes are given to children and the emergency department, patient rooms, outpatient surgery center, also at the Geisinger Grey's Woods location, boxes are given there, Center Volunteers in Medicine, the Children's Advocacy Center, we also donate boxes there. And these boxes are made by local groups, by by Rotary, Kiwanis, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, businesses, the list goes on. Just imagine how many people in Center County have to be involved to make two hundred boxes a month. So it's just you know, it's just a testimony to the big hearts that this this community has. So I'm honored to be here today and the proclamation surely goes to everyone in our town who who makes this possible. So and I'm, it's been a joy to to work with the group at Leadership Center County, who is just all on board with with helping make more Jared boxes. So with that, I'll hand it over to to Donna Smith, who's going to share more about Leadership Center County's role in this. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Donna Smith and I am here representing Leadership Center County. I am part of the class of two thousand twenty-one. And I'm speaking today on behalf of several of our members. We are Karen Brewster, Holly Oxendale, and they are both with us right now. Adam Salyards, Jeff Wheeler, and I. As members of this class, we were given an opportunity to select a community service project. And when we read about the Jared Box Project, we jumped at the chance to become part of this very special and important mission. So the Leadership Center County's philosophy, as many of you know, is that effective leaders improve the quality of life for people in their community. And improving the quality of life for a sick child is something that we can all agree is worthwhile. We had an original plan to hold a mega event and we were envisioning dozens and dozens of people and groups and creating hundreds of Jared boxes. But unfortunately, COVID and we had to think on a smaller scale. So what we have planned is still going to be wonderful, but it's much smaller. It's going to be for this Saturday, May twenty-second. And we are going to have a smaller Jared Box event. And what's going to happen is a smaller group will be attending to assemble approximately one hundred or so Jared boxes. We will be at Tudak Park Pavilion One from eleven AM until two PM. The event is not open to the public, unfortunately. But in attendance will be our small Leadership Center County group, some giant food employee volunteers, and a few representatives from the Jared Box Group. Of course, individual groups can always make donations to the Jared Box Organization if they want. But we are inviting any community members who feel the need to drop off made Jared boxes at Tudak Park this coming Saturday. And I just wanted to recognize Belfont Reads. I'm associated with the Belfont School District as a former teacher and a current school board member. And I put a plea out to the Belfont Reads Organization and within two weeks, they had two hundred donations of books of for all ages, brand new books to be placed in two hundred Jared boxes. So I would like to recognize Belfont Reads, the Belfont Community, and these generous people who have donated almost two hundred books. So with that, we'll see if there's anyone else who would like to say anything.
Hi, this is Zach Barton with Leadership Center County. Commissioners, thank you for your your service to this community, but also the proclamation in recognition of the Jared Box Project and Jared Box Day. I'm going to say just a few words about Cindy very quickly. She's a true asset to our community. I've gotten to know Cindy over the years and what she's doing for not only the children in the hospital, but for volunteerism in building a community service minded community is very important. So Cindy, you're a rock star, you know that. Keep up the amazing work and way to represent Center County in all fifty states. I'm also just very thankful and proud of the Leadership Center County class members who took on this project. Karen, Holly, Donna, thank you for joining us today and doing a great job of representing Leadership Center County. So thank you again, Commissioners.
Thank you, Zach. Absolutely. To Holly and Karen, anything else to add with this? We appreciate you also attending and thank you for presenting on their behalf, Donna. But any any final words?
This is Holly Oxendale. I'll just share as a mom of someone who has received one of these boxes. My four-year-old ended up at the hospital in the ED last year after hurting her head and she needed to get seven staples. And I know her receiving this box just, you know, lightened and brightened that little bit of time that she was there or and she was so anxious and scared and in pain. So I know firsthand the smiles that these boxes can bring. So I'm happy to be part of this group and be able to provide smiles for other children who are going through a hard time in the hospital. So I'm just proud to be part of it.
Thank you, Holly.
Karen Brewster. Leadership Center County has just been an amazing experience and it has really been kind of almost a personal awakening for me to recognize all of you in these grids in front of me. I really never had a full appreciation for what the Commissioners and all of these leaders in our community are doing until these past almost twelve months. So I just want to thank you just personally for the hard work that you do and the hard decisions that you make and the hours and hours that you put in to making this community such a wonderful place to live. My husband and I raised our two children here and it's it certainly is, it's a wonderful place to be and that does not come without a lot of hard work and effort behind the scenes. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Karen, very much. Thank you. Well, it's it's we we the the national, the way that this has gone made a national move across the country is quite remarkable, Cindy, and it's a testament to what one person can do and what one person can inspire us to do. And so you're carrying on the legacy of a young man who is no longer with us, but his impact and energy is still there. So thank you for being with us today and really excited to see you probably cross the one million box mark sometime in the future. So that'll be certainly something really incredible to celebrate. So thank you again for being with us and kudos to the Leadership Center County Class of two thousand twenty-one for a portion of that group to take this on. And so this is, this is great. So we will open it up to any comments from other board members and then look for a motion.
Just want to say congratulations to the Jared Box Project and thank Leadership Center County for supporting it. I know I see a lot of posts on Facebook from Cindy and her supporters and all of the children who are not feeling well, who have something to distract them and something to show them that that community cares about them. So I very much appreciate what you do.
I think it's, I think it's amazing work because I, as a, as a child can probably best testify, it's a traumatic experience being in the hospital, but being in an ER or any sort of strange medical environment where, you know, there's lots of bright lights and lots of pain and, you know, it's very confusing. So anything that 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 can be done to alleviate some of that stress and certainly make that situation a little bit more understandable. I know a few years ago, Mount Nittany Medical Center received the donation from the Mario Lemieux Foundation for their little waiting room area that does the same sort of thing for kids as they're in a traumatic experience in an ER. So it's all great and it just demonstrates once again how special our community is and the folks that in it that are that are in it really are forward-thinking and trying to make a difference. And I just really appreciate all the the hard work that you're putting into this and the fact that it's caught on and so many other locales just testifies to its importance. So good for you guys. We're proud to to support you and recognize everything that the Jared Box Project and the Center County, you know, leadership Leadership Center County has done. So thank you all and appreciate you being with us here this morning.
Okay, so with those comments, we will look for a motion to adopt the nineteenth proclamation of two thousand twenty-one.
Motion to adopt proclamation number nineteen of two thousand twenty-one proclaiming May twenty-second as Jared Box Day in Center County.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, again, thank you to everybody who was able to join us today and we look forward to hearing more about the the work that you're doing. So thank you. Okay, all right, we will now move into our COVID nineteen planning and response section of our agenda. And we will begin with the leave directive updates.
So I'm going to turn that over to Kristen. I was going to start with the masking, but we'll start with the leave update. So go ahead, Kristen.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. With the leave directive, the we discovered that some of the CDC guidelines on what the qualification for fully vaccinated had changed from when we originally had put the draft together. There had been a requirement stating that it had to be within three months of your second shot. That's no longer requirements. We want to remove that requirement from the fully vaccinated, do not have to quarantine if exposed requirement on the leave directive. Additionally, there was one more typo that we also checked. There was a misspelling in the final paragraph that we corrected as well.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Is there any comments or discussion on updating the updating the policy? Okay, hearing none, we will look for a motion to update the policy to that to this effect.
Motion to update the COVID nineteen leave directive policy.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Okay, hearing and seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 The motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Kristen.
Okay, I'll take it over now for the masking policy. As everyone is aware, the County Board of Commissioners adopted a masking policy and it was just about a year ago, May twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty, that that policy was adopted. And that set forth guidance and requirements for our employees and visitors to our buildings around the protocols of masking. The policy was based, and these are the exact words from the policy, this policy is based on guidance from both the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. So as everyone is also aware, last Thursday, the CDC issued a new guidance around mask wearing and they stated that fully vaccinated individuals do not need to mask any longer, not only in outside settings, but in internal inside settings as well. So given that our policy was initially crafted around CDC guidance, it's time for us to come back and take a look at any adjustments that the Board of Commissioners may want to make to this policy. And so that is the purpose of this agenda item today to talk about what revisions the Board would like to make regarding this this policy. So I'll turn it back to Commissioner Pike.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. I wanted to share my screen and I'm going to do that here. If Natalie, if you wouldn't mind providing me the ability to share my screen, I just wanted to show, kind of bring up a calendar in terms of thank you very much. Okay. So again, this is just to kind of focus as we think through the previous vaccination timeline that we've had here in Pennsylvania. So for those on the call or via phone, I'll just go through this. But as we know, and this is great news, the CDC is now saying that individuals that are fully vaccinated do not need to wear masks. And and essentially, the science behind that is, number one, if you are fully vaccinated, you do not, you can still get COVID, but the symptoms are so very, very mild. And then the ability for transmission is greatly reduced as well. So if we think about how long it takes to get fully vested, how long it takes to sign up for the shot, I should back up. When people were eligible, how long it take it took to sign up for the shot? And then how long it took takes to get fully vaccinated? So in column B here, I have under the Pfizer, under the Pfizer timeline, all Pennsylvanians were eligible for the vaccine beginning on Monday, April nineteenth. And we, and that was the the great majority of our staff and and our team here at the county may not have fallen into phases one A, one B, or one C. So so if it once they fell into April, again, April nineteenth, they would then be able to sign up for their shot. And if we say maybe it took one week to schedule the shot, that might be a little optimistic, but still, let's say they were able to get the shot in one week. And this was the Pfizer, they could then schedule three weeks later to get their next shot. So if they get their first shot on the twenty-sixth, May seventeenth, they get their second shot, they would be considered fully vaccinated. they would be considered fully vaccinated on Monday, May 31st. Under the Moderna timeframe, it's a four-week interval between the first and second shot typically. So again, everybody was available for our county employees and their families. May 19, I'm sorry, April 19th, on that Monday, first shot would have been Monday, April 26th. They would have had, let's say, again, optimistically, they were able to schedule in one week. And we know that Mountain Inn Medical Center has been providing both of those shots, CBIM. So the first shot would have been on the 26th, Monday, the 24th would have been that second shot. And so then, again, two weeks later, on Monday, June 7th, they would have been considered fully vaccinated. So from from my perspective, if we look at this timeframe, I think that would probably be the date that I would be most comfortable allowing our members of our staff who have been fully vaccinated to begin to roll back the masking policy here in county government. Because unfortunately, we have a few, we have a few options and I'll run through them here. I'm going to stop sharing this. And this is coming from, it's probably the most persuasive argument I've heard. It's from coming from Dr. Ashish Jha. He's with Brown University. He's a, he's an MD. And he basically breaks it down into three categories in terms of what states and businesses have. The first one would be we would figure out who is vaccinated or not. And he suggests that's hard to do. It's not undoable, but it's hard at this point. Number two would be to drop all masking requirements for everyone and essentially hope for the honor system, which would be easy to do, but may may lead to some issues there. Or three would be to keep masking a little bit longer, which again would be not hard to do and it would be much better. And so again, under the first option, we don't really, it's going to be a extraordinarily difficult challenge for us to do verification of vaccinations. I don't think there's an interest in us having that occur with our staff. Option two would be, we could just say, you know, let, nobody needs to wear a mask who's been fully vaccinated. Problem is, again, we are, from our county staff side of things, not everybody would still be fully vaccinated because again, if they're getting that Moderna shot, took them a week to sign up, four weeks between the shots, two weeks afterwards. Again, Monday, June, June 7th is when they're going to be fully vaccinated. So so waiting for, and so essentially, his his option three is basically wait about four more weeks. And that was again, when that people became eligible on 419. And again, that that would be fully vaccinated would would be, again, if you, he was being more pessimistic, saying June 15th. Also, we're seeing still infection levels in Center County are are still there, but they are decreasing slightly. And so again, I think that you would see that the trend is bending downwards, which is terrific. But if we give it another that this would be under this timeline would be about two and a half weeks. Again, we're going to see even more of a decrease. So again, letting more people get vaccinated in our community and also in county government would would be great and it would would avoid the the issue with having to figure out who's vaccinated, who's not vaccinated in our in our buildings. And again, and again, just give a little bit more time to get for people to get fully vaccinated. I think the, a lot of people, maybe the majority of our staff and citizens have at least gotten that first shot and we're just waiting again for that second shot or many of them have gotten a second shot and are just waiting for it to be fully, fully vaccinated. So again, that would be, my suggestion would be June 7th would be, and again, this is, we can start, we can start the conversation off there. I just wanted to give us kind of a jumping off point for where we could go from here, but I will we can maybe talk about that a little bit. And then I had some suggestions or things for us to think about how our 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 team could start to look at incentives for individuals that are not yet vaccinated and we could be incentivizing that and then also ways that we could basically thank or, you know, reward individuals who have already gotten vaccinated and may, and some ways that we could do that. So I'll I'll leave it there and we can and we can jump off and have more discussion on this.
Go ahead, Mark.
Sure. I don't know, the, for the first topic, you know, that that seems to be a pretty reasonable schedule. I do know of people who are getting the Moderna, which is great, but it adds an extra week to the process. Obviously, some county employees were hopefully beginning to get their vaccinations back in April or earlier, but some of them didn't fall into any of the other categories. Or maybe by the time they were starting to track down vaccine dates, they were having to go with like say, the Saturday before Mike's Mondays at a CVIM mass inoculation situation. And it, while it seems like a long time, the mass vaccination clinic at the British Jordan Center actually has not been open all that long at this point. So yeah, I think, you know, Mike's proposing a good starting point for a schedule to and again, this is just for county employees. Want to stress that this is only county employees. It doesn't apply outside of county employees in Center County facilities. So this is not for regular citizens, et cetera. So yeah, I think it's a good place to start, but you know, happy to to hear Steve's perspective.
Well, I have a, I have a majorly different one. I think those, everybody that's had that that wants a shot has had ample opportunity to get it. If you had the Johnson and Johnson shot, it was one shot and two weeks later, you're good to go. I I really think it's time for us to to move past all this. I really think that we've covered all the bases. I think the infection level's down. The people that are going to get the shots have gotten them. The folks that are hesitant about it probably won't and 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 for good reason, maybe in their minds. I mean, whatever your choice is, it's a free country. And if you, if you're in that situation, as you referred, where, you know, you're in between, where maybe you haven't exactly got your 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 full immunity built up yet, then wear a mask. And and I don't think that's an unreasonable goal, but the folks that have done it right have done it early. I think I think their chances of contracting disease or spreading the disease are negligible. And I think it's time to move on. And I would move that we follow the CDC guidelines now and and move ahead immediately.
Okay, so that would be a motion. Commissioner.
I will certainly make the motion to immediately remove the masking requirements for everybody that has been vaccinated.
Okay. Is there a second?
Can we talk about a compromise date perhaps, Steve?
What do you have in mind?
Well, just just in terms of procedural, we would need to second the motion. If there's not a second, it would die. For lack of a second, we could continue to discuss.
Oh, all right.
Is there a second? Okay, hearing none, the the motion dies, but I think we're going to revisit Commissioner. But yeah, Commissioner Higgins, please.
Sure. So is there, let me try to pull up the calendar here, Steve. Is there a somewhat newer date, maybe like June 1st, which is the day after Memorial Day? Would would something like that be amenable?
I guess that the, well, the board is not to immediately remove, but I guess as quickly as possible would be, would be the next best solution.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Higgins, what date were you suggesting?
I I was thinking maybe June 1st. It is easier to remember. Let's say a June 7th. It does pull the schedule in a little bit.
Okay.
And, you know, that way I just, I know there are going to be a few people who have the Moderna a week or two after it became available to the general population. But just from an ease of remembering it standpoint, it's like, hey, county employees, first of June, if you've been fully vaccinated while you're on county property, on county time, you don't necessarily need to wear a mask. You can still wear one if you want to. That's fine. But you don't necessarily have to wear it.
Okay. So again, just to clarify, June 1st would be effective where we would remove the indoor masking requirements for county employees who have been, who are fully vaccinated.
Correct.
Okay.
Trying to, trying to come up with a compromise.
Okay, all right. I think if that is something that Commissioner Dershowitz is comfortable with, I can also be comfortable with that as well. I think that would get us, again, Pfizer and individuals who are what, who got, who scheduled the shot and were able to get their first shot one week after all, all Center County residents would have been available for the shot, would be fully vaccinated one day prior and under the Moderna. Even though they're not two weeks out from their being fully vaccinated, they would have, they would be heading up to 70, 80, 90% covered. So I I would be, I would be comfortable with that. I could, I could, I could support that.
All right. So hopefully.
So is that, is that a motion?
Sure. So I would like to make the motion to change the county's masking policy such that on the 1st of June, county employees who are fully vaccinated are no longer required to wear masks on county property, although you could still wear one if you would like to.
I I will second it. I would have, I would have preferred a sooner date, but I will second it on the basis of being as timely as possible.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and I appreciate that, Commissioner. I think your willingness to you know, find the fine middle ground on this is, I think, appreciated. It's good for us all. I think all on this issue, we all to get to a consensus. So I appreciate that. And then just to clarify, individuals who are not fully vaccinated would still be required to mask. Is that, is that what we're also saying?
Yeah, I think so, because the motion yeah, the motion only applies to county employees who are fully vaccinated.
Okay, so if an individual.
What we're trying to do is follow the CDC guidelines, correct?
That would be correct. Yes, that'd be correct.
And that's what the indication was from that guidance.
Yes, okay. I just wanted to make sure if you're, if a county employee is is not fully vaccinated at that time, they would still need a mask up. Okay, all right. Okay. All right. So we've had a motion and a second. The one thing I would just, I just want to clarify on this point and I and I do, I do want to get to the vote. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. For from a business operation standpoint, if we would unfortunately have an employee who would have COVID-19 or test positive and they were in the proximity of individuals, we may want to, I don't know if we would, we may want to maybe next week come back with a recommendation on this, but we may want to think through how do we confirm that county employees are vaccinated, are fully vaccinated so they, so they can come back to work and not have to quarantine. Because I know that we're really going to, we're kind of, we're not going to do, you know, that vaccination requirements or checks, I should say. But in terms of how that looks, I think we might want a little bit more guidance on how we would go about asking individuals for that. If we would, we would need, need a requirement or not in terms of showing their vaccination card if if they were exposed and we should have.
Kristen's waving her hand, Mike.
Oh, sure. Please, Kristen, yep.
We actually have that in our leave directive policy that if an employee is exposed and they've been fully vaccinated, they can supply their card to Human Resources so that they do not have to quarantine. So we've actually already got that in our medical leave directive that if someone has been fully vaccinated, but they were exposed to something, because we've, we actually had that happen with an employee. They're exposed to someone outside of the county who had COVID and they did not have to quarantine because they provided us their vaccination card. So we actually already have that process in place and documented.
Okay, that answers my question. Fantastic. Thank you, Kristen. Okay, we did have, we'd be happy to take any public comment on this. We did have an individual, Jennifer M. Was saying that we agree with Commissioner Dershowitz. She was saying natural infection immunity should also play into this decision. That was a few minutes ago and then she had also followed up with, if the state emergency order ends sooner, does the county order end at that point as well? That's a great question in terms of what the, we understand that the governor has acknowledged the emergency orders or the constitution will be amended. He's already reached out to the legislature to talk about what their plans would be. So if any, if any, if if the General Assembly would roll back the the emergency order, we would certainly follow and see what, we would follow the discussions and see what comes out of that. But from what we've heard, many times that there's been a deference to localities in terms of what they're doing, which is what the CDC guidance is. So the CDC guidance is, fully vaccinated individuals do not need a mask. However, states, localities, businesses can still make their determination as well. And this is, that's really what this discussion is about is is having a discussion about what makes sense for county government buildings. So so we, so Jennifer, we would follow that closely and monitor that as well. But that's a really, really good point and timely as well. Would there be any other public comment on this? You're welcome. You're welcome, certainly. Any other comment on this? Okay, all right. All those in favor of the motion to, on June 1st, Tuesday, June 1st, county employees who are fully vaccinated would not have to mask while inside county buildings. We will take that vote. All those in favor of that, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion is carried. Okay, gentlemen, I thought I really appreciate the the middle ground on this and coming up with that consensus. So I I think county employees will appreciate that as well. So thank you. Okay, all right. We will move then into.
One other item, Michael, before we move on.
Please, please.
We'll be having a conversation about reopening county government buildings as well. Is that part of, part of the the ongoing conversation?
Sure, I think I think that should be. And I think also returning to our in-person meetings that we were having in 146 as well could be part of that. And I think I'm, I think we're certainly open to both conversations in terms of that. I would think that we may want to give a little bit more runway for for some of our, so Margaret and the rest of our team to maybe bring, bring some policy or bring some guidance back to us on that. Just because we we may want to, yeah, we want to, might want to be mindful of it. It might, it might, we might need to be a little bit more consideration might be given to some offices and I I don't know if right today, we would want to say Tuesday, June 1st, we could have people into the, into our buildings. We may want to do a staged approach with that. So I.
We need to, we need to start having the conversation.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
So if I could just add, our, our rotation policy is effective through the end of the month of May. And for next Tuesday at the, on the BOC agenda, we will be talking about a review of our office rotation schedule, a timeframe for return to office. And then leading from that sequentially is a discussion about in-person meetings and then opening county buildings. So we're on tap for that scheduled even prior to this new CDC guidance that we would be revisiting and having a fuller discussion on these topics at Tuesday's meeting.
Okay, great. Commissioner Dershowitz, does that sound good from that, that side of things?
Yeah, and I think one of the other things we need to start thinking about is there are, there may be folks that still are not comfortable. You know, for instance, if you want to come in and make up public comment at one of our commissioner meetings, for instance, you know, there are folks who who maybe are not comfortable, you know, coming into the building. Maybe they have a compromised immune system issue or whatever. I think we need to look at a hybrid policy as well. That if we need, you know, if we need to, you know, at least in the in the near term, accommodate folks who who are not 100% comfortable being in the, in, you know, around the public, that we need to make special some special consideration for those folks as well. And I think that needs to be part of the conversation. Both both staff and the public.
I would absolutely agree. I've heard from people who have said one of the silver linings of us going virtual has been they've been able to attend meetings, offer public comment via Zoom. And so if we can keep that as well, again, a hybrid approach, I would agree. I think that that is certainly beneficial.
And there may be a time that that it's easier for us to make meetings, you know, virtually rather than, you know, maybe it's a meeting we wouldn't be able to attend otherwise, that we can attend virtually. You know, I think, I think there's some, we've, we've, we've learned some things through this and certainly we've become comfortable with the format. So I think it's a conversation we'd, I'd like to have anyways.
I agree with Steve. You know, the world has changed a bit and hybrid meetings will allow us more flexibility and quite possibly the ability to have additional public input.
No, that's great. Excellent. All right. So we will, we will make that part of the consideration going forward in terms of what our public meetings would look like. So that sounds great. Um, okay, um. All right, well, you know what? I I apologize. This was on one of my notes and I didn't mention it. I apologize. Just before we get off the topic. Our correctional facility would, from the CDC guidance, not fall into that category of of the recommendation. Uh prisons, nursing homes, other congregate care facilities.
Correct.
Do, do not fall into that, and so that might also be, we also might want to note that the correctional of us. From my standpoint at least, I don't, I don't know if we'd want to have that June first go into that. Uh go into effect there. We may want to uh have, if Margaret, you know, having a conversation with the warden about what his thoughts are on that. What he's hearing from around the state, we we may want to defer that. Um and it's just a thought there, if if there's any other consideration on that, feel free to. Um, because, because we we are at a, we're, we are reduced correctional uh officer level wise in terms of recruitment and retention there currently. And if there was another uh case or out, uh, you know, cases there. That may be, uh, we we may want to be cautious about that, so we, I don't know if there's any updates you'd want to provide on that, Margaret, but I think that we should be mindful about that as well.
CDC guidance was quite clear that this new guidance does not pertain to congregate settings such as correctional facilities, so. Uh that they would continue as currently structured.
Yeah, that's why I I I made the comment earlier that we need to follow CDC guidelines, because that covers all those bases. And allows us to uh use that guidance. At uh, you know, we don't have a nursing home any longer, but we certainly have a uh correctional facility that would fall under that uh. Guidance.
Okay, no, that's, that's a fair point, and so then we're all on the same page with that, and the motion would reflect the fact that correctional facility is not quite yet. Um able to go on June first. Okay, all right, great, thank you. Okay.
One other thing.
Please.
One, one other thing that, you know, we, we talk about uh, you know, what the policies are on county property. But we still have a lot of folks, particularly caseworkers, that that enter the homes of individuals throughout the county. And uh I think we probably need to have a continued conversation about what that looks like as well. As we, you know, move out into the community and and impact uh, you know, families and 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 individuals' lives and homes.
That's a great point. Pro- uh probation officers, sheriff deputies, as they're out in the community. Um we may have, we have some staff who work. In uh buildings such as the sheriff's deputies that are up at the university uh airport, uh so I think, and again. Uh, you know, public transportation uh with uh individuals that are with our office of transportation, so. I think as you, as, I I think at at this point, this motion is really just for. You know, Willabang Courthouse, M- MDJ offices, et cetera. Uh and, and uh that are, that are, you know, and then, and then we could cut, we, a next step could be that phasing, but this at least starts the conversation, lets our employees. And the rest of the community know that we're moving, moving out of this masking requirement. Uh so, uh but I would agree, Commissioner, it's a great point.
Just want to keep it on the radar.
Absolutely. Okay, so future meetings, we'll, we'll be having those discussions and reaching out to affected department heads and elected officials that right, that will have. Their individuals out in the commu- community more and more, or have been out, uh but, but with the masking requirements, being uh mindful of that. Okay. Great, great points, everybody. Thank you. Okay. Uh, all right, we will then move into some of our personnel items today. On our commissioner's agenda, we have for the correctional facilities. Uh seventeen items. Is there a motion to approve all seventeen?
Sure, we don't normally get that high in the room with numerals. Um, motion to approve the seventeen items for the Center County Correctional Facility.
Second.
It's been moved and s- seconded. Uh any final discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, okay. Uh, we, we uh still have uh Kristen on the line with us, so we will, uh, anything you'd like to add for this, Kristen?
Uh, we have a need for floaters, and one of mine is no longer um has the availability to help us out, so. Um, we're looking to hire someone new. She's put in her resignation. Um, and it looks like I'm gonna have another one in a couple of weeks, because one of my other floaters is moving, so out of the area, so we will be um recruiting for two floaters in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion approved?
Motion to approve the person- personnel requisition for on-call occasional office floaters.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Kristen. For human services, we have three items. We have one for adult services, which is the approval of the personnel requisition for a full-time caseworker, one. Uh, we have for drug and alcohol, consideration of the approval of the request for educational program support for Faith Wenick. Uh drug and alcohol case management specialist. And she uh attend, uh, she attended the, a course through Lock Haven University towards her degree in mental health counseling. And this would be to reimburse fifty percent of the tuition in the amount of nine hundred seventy five, seventy-three dollars, sixty-five cents, half the total amount. For the summer of twenty twenty-one, and this would be upon satisfactory completion of coursework and confirmation of budgeted staff development funds. Uh and then lastly, would be a consideration of the approval on the personnel requisition for a full-time vehicle operator in the transportation office. We do have uh Director Lamison with us. Uh Dave, anything you want to mention on that item?
I'd just like to take a, make a shout out to Susan Warner, who is retiring uh with almost twenty-four years of service with the county. Uh, certainly bittersweet for me uh as her director and and working with her for all these years, but uh I wish her the best and and certainly uh. Can only wish good things for Susan uh in her retirement. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, absolutely. Yeah, nearly a quarter, quarter century of service to the county is uh something to be recognized and praised. I appreciate that. Okay, uh we have all these three human services items. Is there a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve the three items for human services.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried, okay. Uh for records management, uh we have the uh consider the approval of the revisions of the job description for the position of receiving clerk. Uh records man, uh receiving clerk records management. And uh we look for a motion to approve that unless there's any comments we'd like to make on that or need to have on that. Okay, hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the revisions to the job description for the position of receiving clerk records management.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, do so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion is carried. Okay, uh last on personnel items, we have on, for our tax assessment office. Consider approval of the personnel requisition for a full-time homestead farmstead coordinator, field data or collector. And uh we look for a motion to that effect.
Motion to approve the personnel requisition for full-time homestead slash farmstead coordinator slash field data collector and tax assessment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, uh we have a report on judicial personnel items listed on our agenda there. We will move into our non-personnel items, and we appreciate your patience. Uh Court Administrator McNiss, uh we will turn it over to you for this item.
Does she need to be unmuted?
Uh, it looks like she, she would have the capa- she's on, it looks like she, uh Kendra would be on the computer, she would have the capability to do that. We, we can loop back if uh she's not available at this time.
She had dialed in because she was not.
Oh, okay.
It looks like she's there now.
Okay.
Let me try this. Can you hear, can you hear?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, you're a little echoey, but.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, that works great.
Okay, technology and I are not uh friends these days. We had. Put in new sound systems in courtroom one and courtroom two, if you recall, a few months ago. We tried to use in courtroom two equipment that we had microphones so that we could try to lower that cost. Those microphones are not. Working well with the new system we have. So the quote that we have is for microphones and then also um a connection um adapter that we need for. Zoom for us to be able to uh view exhibits. And then in courtroom one, with the installation of Plexiglas, we put safeguards in place. Because of COVID. The Plexiglas now has kind of caused issues with the ability for the judge and the court reporter to hear. So the request is also for speakers that will allow um the judge to hear and also the court reporter. Since, since the Plexiglas is creating an issue with that.
Okay, thank you, Kendra.
Thank you.
Sure. Any, any questions or comments on this item for Kendra? Okay, we are hearing none. Is there a motion?
Well, before, actually, before we do, I actually do have a question. That is. Uh, I have a problem with the Plexiglas. Is that something that's going to be a permanent fixture in that uh, in that environment?
I don't know how long that will be there. We have um Plexiglas in courtroom one. That is the courtroom that we're going to primarily use for trials. So we have trials coming back um into play beginning in June. So we have Plexiglas, you know, for the witnesses, for the defense counsel, the. The judge, the court reporter. I don't know how long that would be in place. That would be up to the president judge. But my understanding is for now that that would be in place for these upcoming trials.
Thank you.
And and if I understand, Kendra, the way it's, it's situated in courtroom one is it's not a, it's not permanently affixed to the actual. Uh bench, it's where it's, it's resting on top.
Yes, correct.
Okay, okay, and that would be the similar way you'd have it in other courtrooms if you would, as you expand them, if you need, if you need to, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh and then we would uh then look for the vote, correct? We haven't taken a vote yet, correct? Okay, uh all those in favor of approving this, do so by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? The motion is carried. Okay, thank you again, Kendra.
Thank you.
Okay, for our next item under non-personnel, we will turn it over to Administrator Gray to discuss the agreement with the Bellefonte Borough.
Hey, thanks very much. As you all are aware, we have a shortage of parking around the courthouse complex for employees. We've been uh working on uh some contingency plans to provide additional parking. We know that we are short almost fifty parking spaces. And a starting point for addressing this issue was to approach the Borough of Bellefonte about the possibility of leasing spaces from them. Into uh adjacent municipal lots. We've gone through the process of meeting with their parking committee, and then the. Bellefonte Borough approved the purchase of these parking spaces earlier this week, and so uh asking for. Uh board approval to go forward with this purchase in the amount of six thousand dollars. It would be ten spaces. For one year, and then we would provide a three hundred and fifty dollar one-time fee. For uh marking those spaces as reserved for county employees. So the request is for six thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. It would be for the period of June first, twenty twenty-one through June first of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Any questions, comments, feedback? Okay, just to stay, appreciate the Bellefonte Borough's cooperation and partnership with this, uh working to uh assist us with this, and so. Look forward to uh this, looking at this agreement. So uh is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agreement with the Borough of Bellefonte.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor, do so by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Okay, thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
This next, next item for tax claim and collections, we will turn it over to uh Deputy Administrator Frank.
Good morning, Commissioner. Uh before you, is the annual contract renewal with Palmetto Posting. The company that provides physical posting of properties. That have delinquent tax bills. And or unclaimed tax notices. Twenty nineteen upset tax sale and twenty twenty return in claim notice postings are slated to occur simultaneously. During the second half of this year. And so the request is to add the contract renewal with Palmetto Postings Inc. to the May twenty-fifth consent agenda.
Okay, it is, it is, uh, thank you, John. Any questions or comments on this item?
None.
Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to add the contract renewal with Palmetto Postings Inc. to the May twenty-fifth consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, do so by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, uh under a grant section, uh we will turn it over to Norm at this time for uh the item uh with the emerg- uh emergency communications office.
Good morning. Uh, we are seeking approval for a letter of engagement with the Commonwealth of P A. The approval of this letter engages Center County nine-one-one uh participation in Pima's Next Generation nine-one-one program. Uh they are currently developing. Uh the majority of the Next Generation nine-one-one will be funded by Pima or by grant applications. Uh this agreement is for the period of May twenty twenty-one till February twenty twenty-seven, and at no cost to the county. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Norm. Yeah, any, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to add the. Letter of engagement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to the May twenty-fifth consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion is carried. Thank you, Norm.
Thank you.
Okay, for these three items under criminal justice planning, we will turn it over to Administrator Gray.
Thanks very much. Uh, three items this morning under criminal justice planning all involve. Grants with the Pennsylvania Commission on uh Crime and Delinquency. Item uh one and three are both project modification requests of existing grants. To extend these projects up beyond the uh originally established grant period to allow for projects that not, that could not occur during the. COVID nineteen environment. Uh, item number two is a project modification request. It doesn't involve a. Time change, but it does involve a um the addition of two treatment services that were not in the original application. Dollar amount remains the same. So item one is a project modification to the. Center County Hope Initiative Comprehensive Opioid Abuse Site-Based Program, and it allows the project to uh extend. Uh the total of the grant is hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And it would be funded through the period of June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. The uh second item is the project modification request to the twenty twenty-one County Intermediate Punishment Program Grant. It would include the addition of two treatment services, uh not in the original application. And the third is a project modification to the Brian Justice Assistance Grant Fund. Funding, and it will extend the grant period. Uh and the total of the grant is ninety thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And the extension would be through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Any, any uh conversation or questions on those three items?
Nope, it works for me.
Okay. All right, we will look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the submission of project modification requests to PCCD.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? All right, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of approving, do so by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? The motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much, Margaret. We have two satisfaction pieces. One is for Jason Kunkel at the premises located at one nine four Amberly Lane in Bellefonte. And the other satisfaction piece is for Melissa Moore at the premises located at four one two North Fifth, Fifth Street in Filtsburg. We look for a motion to approve both satisfaction pieces.
Motion to approve the satisfaction pieces for Jason Kunkel and Melissa Moore.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Okay, all right, we look for a motion to approve this week's consent agenda.
Motion to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, do so by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Okay, for liquid fuels, uh, uh, Margaret, anything we needed to add or talk about with this item?
No, this is uh just seeking approval to submit an application to PennDOT on behalf of Harris Township in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you. And this would be for, uh, West, uh, Culver on, uh, West Main Street between Wagner Streets and the entrance to Yoda Preserve. We look for a motion, and we look for a motion to approve the submission.
Motion to approve the submission of Harris Township's application to PennDOT.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion has carried. Okay. Uh, we will go into our check run for this week. Is, uh, was heard over to Commissioner Higgins.
Sure. A just slightly smaller than average check run of $1,364,957.54. The, uh, check of the week is to the, uh, Center County Cooperative Extension Service in partnership with Penn State. Um, a subsidy per budget of $5,443. Uh, would like to make the motion to approve the check run dated May 14th.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye, aye.
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 Motion is carried and we, the check run is approved. Okay. All right. Going to announcements, we do wanna let, remind everybody that on Monday, May 31st, Center County Government Offices will be closed to observe and recognize Memorial Day here in Center County. The, the first place of Memorial Day. So uniquely important for us to be doing that. Okay. Uh, any executive sessions, Margaret, to, uh, to, uh, report?
No executive sessions to report. However, I do need to request a brief executive session on a personnel matter.
Okay. And following this or in conjunction with this meeting?
Uh, yes, or following the salary board meeting.
Oh, or, or the salary board. Okay, great. We'll do it. We'll do it, uh, that. Okay. All right. So, uh, any questions from the press at this time, uh, before we go into our salary board meeting? One last chance for any media questions? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, let, let's look for a motion to recess our commissioners meeting. We'll come back. Uh, we'll do our salary board, adjourn that and come back for an executive session. Uh, would there be a motion to recess the board commissioners?
Motion to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting at 11:14.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of recessing, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. We are in recess and we'll, uh, let the meeting end.